And, uh, continue on, so, anybody have anything else for today?
Tom, I just wanted to mention again, workforce housing, we still have some units available at the gardens. So, if anybody knows somebody who is interested in moving into the gardens and they qualify income-wise, they should contact Hudson River Housing, there's a offshore outside and, uh, we subsidize the purchase price of those units.
Uh, we have, uh, we have openings for several committees, uh, we support the Ethics Board also. Um, but if anybody's interested in serving or volunteering in our community for any of the committees that we have, it certainly applies for any of them, but at least have your domain interest on record for, um, for any years in the future. And also, by the way, this is, uh, the first meeting after the elections, and I wanted to congratulate the winners. This one's super lucky.
Thank you.
Uh, Joe, another four years here with the town board. Elaine Fernandez, who's not here, and Judge Kane, re-elected, and the town board's successor has been elected, Charl Wilds. And one of the first ones, oh, of course, our-
Artis.
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 Who's in a much warmer place right now. I don't want to tell you where, but it sounds like Arizona.
I'm from Arizona.
Uh, any announcements, guys, last chance?
Tom, those, uh, the openings on the committees, or anyone who's interested in serving on the committees, they can get the application off the website.
We'll move for the approval of town board prior minutes, five number 28, October 30th, November 1st, and November 4th, and November 6th. Uh, the 1st of 28 is a regular town board meeting, and the rest are budget workshops. So, motion, the second?
The second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is so. We do have a continuation of the public hearing for 2014 preliminary town budget. Uh, I don't know if we've, um, announced that as, um, 7:00 PM or not, but I'll, but I'll wait till 7:00 PM to start that, so. There's also a public hearing on 2014 mandatory code sewer district budget, which I'll also wait till 7:00 PM. We have no presentations, I don't believe, tonight. You do have liaison reports, if anybody's up on this, anybody have any comments?
Liaison report. Um, just so you know, Bobby's been working with Costco and, uh, nursing the heating system here along, so we think we can get through another year right now without replacing the boiler. So, it's, um, the, he's also working on the repairs to the, the pool pit and the relocation of the chlorine tanks. Uh, well, that's in the planning stages right now, but we should be ready by the spring. Um, he put in the third and fourth Clemson pond levelers up at the landfill-
For the beavers.
For the beavers. Uh, the reason we had to put the fourth one is, the beavers moved downstream and built another dam. So, we had to add another, uh, uh, pipe in there. Um, he's rebuilding the walkway between the recycling dumpsters at the transfer station. Let's see, Gina and I are working on the, um, trying to facilitate the gateway signs with, with Christian, get that through. Um, the village and town planning boards are reviewing the TMP plans, they're doing it separately from now on, right? Uh, then they come together at some point. We are going to have to do soil tests in the picnic area because that's a wastewater or a stormwater area they like to put stuff and we're afraid that it's, so, we're gonna have to check on that. Um, I got a lot of stuff, I'm sorry. Uh, Lynda Berry and I paid a visit to Milan Town Board regarding, um, shared promotion of recreation. They were very receptive to it. Um, we're gonna go talk to some other towns, too. And, uh, for, for us, it's a way to drive more revenue and make better use of our resources. Um, the committee will have recommendations for fees and committee structure next month. Wait. Um, two more things. Let's see, the soccer field up at Stone Church, the fence around it after twelve and a half years has finally been finished. The, uh, Rhinebeck Soccer League, mostly John Nantle, and, uh, the adult soccer players, mostly Gary Dial, uh, finally finished it this weekend, so it's all fenced in for only twelve years. And the last thing was, Dog Park opened this weekend and seemed to go pretty well.
I thought it was great. I thought it was really great, and I'm really proud about that, Chris, but I enjoyed it.
You mentioned something about the walkway at the transfer station, rebuilding it. What is, uh, the-
Between the two, between the, the two, um, recycling containers, that pressure-treated wood in there is falling apart. So, that's been cut and is being rebuilt.
Is this something Roy Ocean?
No, it's, it's facility, but it's ours.
How expensive is this?
It's not really, it's a couple of hundred bucks.
Is this something Bobby can do?
He's already doing it.
Oh.
Yeah, somebody's doing it. It, it's upkeep, Bobby, we, we have problems if somebody fell on it.
Anybody else, what do you have for?
I, um, received from the county, a, uh, contract for our technology grant, our seventy-two thousand dollar technology grant, which I will forward to all of you, I will fill it out, it's very short, it just breaks up the budget that I gave to them. And, um, then we can, um, have our attorney, Warren Kinski, prepare this whole agreement for the village because we'll be administering for them as well. So, that, uh, we'll get started pretty soon, and have a, uh, scheduling meeting with our, our, our tech people, and we'll get going on that.
I met with Gary Slater from the cemetery, Bogiam Highway, and, um, Wyatt from Highway, and Kathy, and Shelley. And we combined every piece of equipment from every list that everybody has, and we got rid of the things that are no longer in service or in use or have been sold, and we added a bunch of things that hadn't been listed. And John Gautier is going to start merging those in an Excel spreadsheet and where they're all located and who's in charge of them, what their replacement value would be, and then I'm gonna be with our insurance carrier to make sure that we're properly covered.
You, have you spoken to, uh, our agent, Wyatt?
No, he said as soon as I have the list to call him. So, John and I are starting on that this afternoon.
So, uh, you bring our liaison reports. We're gonna wait until, uh, 7:00 PM to hear the, look, open the public hearing for the preliminary budget and also for the mandatory sewer district, if you haven't mentioned that, anybody came in. Uh, so, we'll move on to quickly approving some resolutions of, uh, for the abstract 11. Numbers be 1058 through the 1118, fifty-three checks, the amount fifty-five thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Group, item two is a resolution approving the preliminary capital project, 2013 abstract 10, checks for the amount five thousand eighty-six dollars and two cents. Motion, the second?
Motion.
The second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item three is a resolution approving the budget transfers and amendment.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
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 Vote, so move. Item four, a resolution authorizing settlement of a gallon of fine pickle fees. That's the amount of six thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion?
The second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Joe.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So, move. Item five, a resolution authorizing execution, subscribers' payment for American School Insurance Reciprocal. That's basically just the nine-year agreement that we have to participate in as our insurer. Motion, the second?
Motion, second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose, so move. Item six, a resolution approving the contract of Columbia Free Humanity Society, SPCA. Something to do every year. Um, is there any, uh, increase in that, or no? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item seven is a resolution authorizing Dutch County Real Property Tax Office, 311. On certain benefit of social accounts for 2014 county tax bills. Motion, the second?
Motion.
Second.
Please, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Being that it is set at that clock, uh, we'll continue the public hearing on 2014 preliminary budget, the town, and also a public hearing on 2014 vendor code sewer district. So, we open the floor, any comments, uh, for the public hearing? And this is basically, uh, an opportunity for the community to, their concerns, voices, not basically an opportunity to engage back with the town board. But we are here to hear any concern for comments in the budget. The floor is open for post-able items.
Good evening, supervisor, members of the board, my name is Keith Torrell, and I'm a trustee across the street in the village. And I serve as a liaison to the fire department and, uh, that's what brings me here, uh, tonight. First of all, I'd just like to thank all of our volunteer firefighters across the three districts of service to our town for their continued selfless service to our community. In reviewing the budget, uh, for the fire department, some of the things we noticed is that the call line continues to increase over the years. We just had a record year. Uh, the fire department, uh, year goes from November 1st to October 31st. So, we brought in a total of eight hundred and one calls, uh, we said for a record. So, the numbers that we talked about before have been updated slightly, um, and I'll have a, a sheet for, for you guys to look at. Uh, it didn't change the breakdown. Basically, the town accounts for fifty-two percent of the calls that roll out of the firehouse. But spurtly, they pay about forty percent of the bill. So, conversely, the village, um, receives about forty-eight percent of the services, but picks up sixty percent of it. One other thing that I looked at more recently is the comparison of the per-call rates from the three districts. And just keep in mind, when we're talking about, uh, the Hillside and Rock Cliff districts, they have their fire districts, and then also the contracted rate to cover the fire protection districts. So, um, if you add those up, which all comes eventually, uh, from the town taxpayer, the Rock Cliff Fire Department is just shy of one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, and they, uh, respond to less than a hundred and fifty calls per year. So, that makes their rate, uh, twelve hundred forty-five dollars per call. Hillside is, uh, their total is about one forty-eight, four eighty-four, and they respond to less than two hundred calls per year, which makes their per-call rate at seven forty-two. In the current, uh, town budget, uh, Rhinebeck is slotted for one hundred forty-six, three hundred forty dollars. And the Rhinebeck Fire Department responds to four hundred thirty-one calls, or did in the, in the year that just ended, uh, for a rate of three hundred forty dollars per call. So, as you can see, it's, uh, drastically less than, than the other departments. What the-
I'm sorry, Hillside, you said equals?
Less than two hundred. And those numbers, um, are high-end estimates on the number of calls, probably, uh, less, but I do not have the, uh, exact numbers to work with, uh, just to be clear on that one. So, the number that, uh, the village, uh, we have presented to the tab for coverage, um, for the, uh, calendar year 2014 is one hundred eighty-seven dollars, one hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars. And based on four hundred thirty-one calls, that would increase the rate to four hundred thirty-six dollars, um, per call. Now, if you were to look at, just break out, Rock Cliff, Hillside, put them together, uh, their rate is at least nine hundred fifty-eight dollars per call. And again, compare that to the four thirty-six that, uh, that we're asking for. If we were to use that number, we'd be asking for almost four hundred thirteen thousand dollars. But, uh, like I said, it's one eighty-seven nine fifty-three. Uh, we just had a meeting across the street, um, and the, uh, village board voting unanimously unanimously to set the contract rate for, uh, calendar year 2014 at the aforementioned one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. One hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars.
That's, uh, that was the increase of the forty thousand?
Forty-three thousand. So, it's a forty-three thousand dollar increase for the town?
I don't have the exact increase there, but we broke it out off of the total projected cost. It is somewhere in the, in the forty thousand, I do know that.
Which is about a twenty-six percent increase for the overall, for the village department?
No.
For our portion of it.
I don't know about the increase, I know that it's, it corresponds to the fifty-two percent of calls that are, that go out to the town, um, in terms of what the increase to the contract is.
Just for the public, I want to make it clear that, uh, the fire department has come for us and asked us for about a forty-three thousand dollar increase in the rate, and we're looking at it, and it means, um, I think our tax cap this year is what, it's about thirty-six thousand dollars. So, for us to, to stay within our tax cap, um, which we've done so far in the budget that we've presented, uh, we have a thirty-six thousand dollar raise, this forty-three thousand dollars is additional. So, we would probably go to, a little over two percent over our tax cap if we were to grant this, and we're still looking at it and still in negotiations, we haven't signed a contract yet. Is that a fair assessment? I just want the public to be aware that this is what we're looking at.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, not two percent over what we have now, but up to about two, three percent.
No, it would be two percent over what we have now. The forty-six thousand dollars would probably be two point, I think, uh, an additional two point three percent. So, it would put us well above our tax cap, two point three percent above our tax.
And we're at that one point six.
One point six six.
Do keep in mind that over the last four years, when the numbers have been tracked, it's been pretty consistent in terms of the, uh, the fifty-two percent, and that's, that's an average of the four years, but you go to each year, the town has realized the savings over the last, you know, in the determined number of years, they've, uh, gotten bargained on the steel percent.
I think in 2012, the number of calls shifted, the, uh, village had more calls than the town.
That's correct, there was one outlier in 2012.
Well, I think what you did, a three-year average?
A four-year average.
Four-year average, so twenty-five percent of the time, uh, village had more than the town.
And seventy-five percent of the time, the town had more than the village, and you take the entire average and you come up with a forty-eight fifty-two. And we wouldn't have gone back further, but it's only been tracked in that way, uh, for the last four years.
Thank you.
Part of that was never broken out at all.
That was helpful, Keith.
Any else?
First.
No?
You're gonna give us-
Oh, yeah, I got a, uh-
The, the detail on the, the splits, right?
Yes.
What, what, you and I were doing that Sunday?
Yes. There you go, oh.
No, I meant-
Yeah.
Yeah, I meant-
I, I can address that as well in terms of, uh-
We looked at one month, but I'm saying, we would have to look at all months.
We looked at one of the forty-eight, and, um, historically, they did not count mutual aid calls. I know that, uh, this past year, they did count, uh, there were a total of seventeen calls that went to Rock Cliff. Uh, so, those were included in the town, I know you, the one month you looked at, there was, uh, I believe, six calls we couldn't account for. Something in that effect, so-
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, even if you took ten percent of the calls off, we'd still fall hundreds and hundreds of dollars below the per-call rate of, of the other, uh, providers to the production districts.
Now, who provides ambulance coverage for Hillside during the day?
As I understand it, um, as I don't represent Hillside, but as I understand it, uh, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM Northern Dutch paramedics provides coverage to Hillside. 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM Rhinebeck, uh, Fire Department provides that coverage free charge to Hillside.
Okay. And, and you, that's an agreement from one company to the other, it's not through the special district? Is that correct?
As I understand it, yes, but I, I can't speak definitively on that.
Who, who's got a firm clue?
Rock Cliff is the town.
The fire protection is good.
The Rock Cliff, yeah. But do keep in mind, and John maybe could help me out, that the Rock Cliff Fire Department does not have the apparatus to reach the top of Rock Cliff Dursing Home, so whenever there's a call there, Rhinebeck has to, uh, take the ladder there as well, so. And first alarm. Yeah. So, but definitely, definitely a lot of cooperation, um, yeah, I'm just trying to understand. Sure. Those are, I don't know all those, all the details of, uh, the operational side of it.
And we have until December 31st to sign the contract, I mean.
I believe, I believe so, I mean, it starts, it goes a calendar year, so.
Do you include, uh, EMS calls, I mean strictly?
Yes, they're, they're, they are included, I, I do have, uh-
Or is this all, is this, um-
They're all included, I want to say, that one's in my folder across the street, waiting to get to the department report, but it's, it's about, uh, it's a similar breakdown. I think, uh, there's over five hundred of those, eight hundred and one, roughly five hundred are EMS calls, and the breakout is, uh, is fairly similar to that. I can guess that, yeah, five hundred of the eight hundred for the year, uh, are, are EMS calls. Which, as I understand it, tend to be longer, uh, longer in duration. You know, they don't, aren't able to track man-hours and, and, uh, you know, actual cost of what supply is used and, and, uh, mileage and all that.
Um, do you have a copy of the contract you guys wrote down? Did you guys, you guys approve the contract that you sent?
We just established a rate on the contract, so I do have a copy of last year's contract, uh, or something.
I thought you had it on the one foot here.
No, we didn't draft, uh, the contract, we just established the total, the total amount.
You said you had a copy of last year's contract, it's an extra, can I get a copy of last year's?
Sure, I mean, it should be on file here at the town and on file at the village, but I don't have it over here in this folder, but, um, it's available for all of us to pull it back. All right? Thank you.
So, the floor is open for public comment for, uh, hearings on both the, um, 2014 town preliminary budget, uh, and for also the 2014 vendor code sewer district budget. Anybody have any comments? And I think we're gonna keep the public hearing open until next week, is that correct?
No.
So-
Good evening, I'm Egon Lawson from Vanderburg Cove. I have a few questions because I, I'm still in the darkness. What I would like to find out, because I see something about the EFC thirty-year interest-free loan, and then I see that all the money is from the DEC grant have been applied to the EFC loan. Well, what I would like to know is, how much money did we get from the grant? What was paid? What wasn't paid? What was denied by the grant to us? What is that interest-free loan when, from what I understood, that, that grant was gonna cover pretty much everything? So, what I would like to find out, and I like it, a lot of the people in Vanderburg Cove, is what happened? What was denied? Was the, what was the sewer district in Vanderburg Cove deny the engineering fees that were given because they changed from one engineering firm to more is associates? What happened in that? How much money was denied because of the switch of engineering? How much money was denied because of the pumping? That was an insane intensive pumping that went to pump water that was being infiltrated into the system because the catch basins were not sound. And I think if you all here can recall, for seven years, I fought to have those catch basins fixed. And from what I understand, that was done for seven-five thousand dollars. What was the total cost of the pumping that went in and was that denied in the grant that was given to us? Because decisions were made for the pumping, instead of a decision made to fix where the water that was going to the system was coming. So, I would just like to have some, the town board send us something to show us, this is what the grant was, this is what was denied, and why? Before anybody can vote on anything, because I'm paying twelve hundred dollars a year, and I want to know, why am I paying for a loan? And I have one more question. In one of the meetings of the board, half of some of the cost, the town board had decided that they were going to give us a credit for half of that cost incurred, and they were gonna pay for it to help us. What happened to that deal? Did the town of Rhinebeck greenlight on their promise to take half of that cost? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a public hearing, so we're not gonna engage in that. Any further comments on the budgets, Ember Cove, or the, um, 2014 budget? Thanks for your comments, appreciate it. I think at this time, we'll have the most effective to close the public hearing.
The second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So move. All right, continuing with the, uh, items for visits, resolution approving the business associate agreement with Marshall and Sterling Insurance. Uh, motion, the second?
Motion, the second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Item ten-
We did forget eight.
Right. We'll go back to that in a second. Item ten is a resolution approving the rights for the MVP Healthcare Amendment Code Goldenware PPO for 2014. Motion, the second?
A motion, the second?
Any discussions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Go back to eight, a resolution approving the amendment for the insurance law agreement with the vendor code sewer district between the town and the town at High Park, motion, the second?
Motion.
I, I just, this, this is what you asked for about the billing all from one place, what the committee asked for? So, this is, just puts it in place for the fawns. We're, we'll do all the billing from this point.
For people who had played in High Park?
Yeah, yeah. It, it had been that way for years, and then they somehow split it up, and they were getting different bills than Rhinebeck residents were, and it was bizarre. Sorry, aye?
No, okay, all, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
So, move. Item-
Just going back to ten for a second, Tom, the rates for the MVP Healthcare Gold, are those the ones that came in a little lower? those the ones that came in a little lower than we had anticipated? That was, that was one of the two times since I've been on the board that that's ever happened, so I appreciate it.
Item eleven, there's a resolution approving the 2014 contract with Paris Computer Systems for the town tax collector software, motion, second.
A motion, second.
All in favor, aye.
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 At some. Resolution number, item twelve, resolution accepting the rezoning petition for the town fire.
Motion.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Well, I've asked John Lyons and Michael Tremble here, I think also Mr. McGuire and his partner, to share. Would somebody like to take us through, please, Lawson?
Hi, good evening. John Lyons, the mayor's attorney for the town. This is a rezoning petition. This is similar to the core group petition that got processed earlier in the year. So, you may recall that earlier this year, you established a policy which provides informational and procedural framework for processing these applications. So, you've been around the track once on this, and I think things went pretty smoothly the first time around. The step that's being taken tonight is the initial step in the process. Mr. McGuire's petition is going to be submitted to you this evening, and the first step that you need to take is just deciding whether to accept the petition. And what that means is, because accepting and considering these petitions are purely discretionary acts on your part, and you can either decide to entertain them or not as you see fit, the first decision, that level decision that has to be made is whether you're willing to entertain that at all. And that's what, by accepting the petition, you are saying that you are willing to do that, and you're also saying that the material that's been submitted to you is complete and in accordance with the policy on this. Mr. McGuire has engaged Dan Schuster, who is the same planning consultant who worked for the core group, so Dan's familiar with the process and familiar with what your expectations are. As was done with the core group, this petition isn't coming to you cold. Dan formulated the petition in draft format, and he sat down at various times with Michael and with me, and with also Lisa Camp and Jeff Romano, to go over the petition and discuss it, so that we had a chance to give some informal input at an early level and to be able to make an informal recommendation to the town board as to whether the petition should be accepted. And it's come through that process, and I believe that everybody's in agreement that the town board should entertain this application. So, I'll turn the floor over to Dan. If you're interested in just hearing some of the basics about what the petition involves and what's being proposed, he can take you through that.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
From Dan Schuster, planning consultant, assisting Mr. McGuire with this application. In brief summary, when two thousand and nine zoning law was adopted, it rezoned an area south of the village on the east side of Route Nine that had previously been R1 district. It's a neighborhood made up of lots which pretty much conformed to those R1 standards, approximately one acre, a little bit over an acre area. With the exception of the thirty-seven lots in the neighborhood, thirty-five of them are around one acre, some less, some more, and two additional lots, Mr. McGuire's, and one other lot about five acres. The standards of the RC five district, which would now apply in that area, obviously prevent any further subdivision of those lots, but in addition, the setback requirements make most of the houses in that area now non-conforming, so that additions of a porch or a rear deck is going to very likely require at best the barriers, plus the standards. What Mr. McGuire is opposing is to take advantage of a provision that was first outlined in the comprehensive plan and then incorporated in the zoning law, which essentially recognized within that huge area east of Route Nine, most of which is low density, but there are some areas where there aren't existing neighborhoods of smaller homes. The comprehensive plan proposed something called the Neighborhood Infill Overlay Zone, which would override the lot size requirements in certain designated areas to allow those neighborhoods to continue to provide affordable housing and to just comply with what the existing conditions in the neighborhood already were. Only one area was initially put in that overlay zone, the area in Sepaska.
That was done in two thousand and nine as part of the original zone, so we do have something in a, in I-O district.
Correct. And what's being proposed now is that the area before you is about forty acres, there's thirty-seven existing homes, also be designated that neighborhood infill overlay district. That does two things. It'll makes the, most of the lots now in that area conforming in terms of area. It will allow subdivision of the two lots that are larger, subject to approval of the planning board. But what it also does.
Can I ask you a question on that? So, the way I understand this, if we create this district, there could be eleven new houses. How many new houses are we talking about? One block is, I think, six acres, I don't know if there's anything on it, or is it six?
The six-acre lot has an existing, as it happens, there was a subdivision proposed before the zone was approved, which would have added three lots yet, or four lots?
So, you could have then five new houses on that six-acre plot?
Four.
Four more. And then what about the five point two, seven acres?
That's a regular two-family house, conceivably, depending on the physical layout and the ability to provide these utilities, you might get three more houses in that.
Okay, so, the practical thing is seven more houses in this thirty-seven acres?
The maximum, yeah.
Is it in the LWRP? It's not, right?
No, it's the idea.
And we're not being asked to decide yes or no, we're just deciding to let it go through the process. It will still need to go through all of the planning and zoning approval processes.
Correct.
Okay.
But there'll be, so there'll be two levels. After tonight, one of the things that if you decide to accept this, one of the things will be, you'll need to refer this matter to the C A B and the planning board, and they'll be providing you with written recommendations. And then it'll come back to you in the hugging opportunity to review those recommendations and debate it amongst yourselves, obtain more information from the applicant if you want that. Then, once the zone, if you decide to change the zone and the zone is changed, then any subdivision or the, any it comes to add additional housing to that neighborhood would be subject to the normal review process, subdivision, site review, in front of the planning board.
When do these owners of the thirty-seven parcels in this thing that may change, when do they get notice and when do they have an opportunity to come in? Do they get notice?
You'll hold a public hearing in connection with this, because the rezoning is essentially like, it's a legislative act, it's an amendment to the zoning law.
So, we would hold a public hearings?
Yes.
And we could, as part of this, ask that notice actually go out to all thirty-seven parcel owners?
Sure, that's possible.
We can make that.
It's not required by the law, but you could ask that.
Right.
Because this is a discretionary process, you don't have to be doing this at all, you're free to make requests like that.
But in, in planning and in zoning, you would be notifying the neighbors as well?
Well, I think that's just adjoining property owners. I'm talking about all thirty-seven because we're affecting.
District.
Yeah, we're affecting a whole district, so I think it's at least fair that they should have an opportunity to know and say.
The thing is that, and I think, I don't know, you know, how much people know about what the impact of this will be, but most, I mean, in, I think the impact are going to be positive for the people that already have homes in this district because not being non-conforming use is number one, and then the bulk regulations that apply to the district as proposed are much more in keeping with the lot sizes that are there rather than the RC five district. So, it's a better fit in many ways, it's liable to require less red tape on behalf of residents of that district that they want to make changes to the property.
The only theory you can play about should be happy.
I would, I think that's speculating, but it should, is the theory.
One other thing that the overlay district is, in recognizing that it's allowing smaller lots, it also recognizes that some of the uses permitted in the RC five district in the more rural areas of town are other non-residential or more of the single-family, customary residential uses. It limits those, so you could not have, for instance, funeral loans or farm markets or.
Many golf.
Many golf.
You cannot have golf, I'm saying, like, in one acre lot, you could not have one golf course.
Okay.
I see the draft, I guess, SECA form that's part of the package. I was just wondering, there's the project description, project acre to be developed, no change, project acres to remain undeveloped, no change. But in fact, if we passed this, it would allow seven more houses.
But the changing of the zoning doesn't generate any development. Should you change the zone, an applicant come in for a subdivision would then have to go through the SECA process.
Right, but I think we're sticking our head in the sand if we don't realize that it opens up this possibility, which may be a fine possibility, you know, and maybe nobody has a problem.
I think. Go ahead.
I just want to ask you a question. You compare this to the RM1 restrictions, where is the RM1 of some of the?
It's along, it's the special market street going down to Rymer Cliff.
That's all RM1?
Some along there, I believe, some of Rymer Cliff, I believe, is also RM1. There's not much of it, there's not much of it, there was more.
So, what, I think that one of the key issues is that, pretending this forum is that there was a contractor's charter, and by approving this would take that commercial element out of this, this concept of residential development. So, so even though there's an issue of potential growth for residential property, it does take out, it kind of unifies the zone into the community that exists except for that commercial piece of property. I mean, that's going to be going with this, right, that type of concept with it.
Yes, contractors' yard would not be permitted use in that, in the area of the district. It is a permitted use in the RC five.
Can we also ask the applicant to fund an escrow tonight, or if we accept it?
I'm sorry. We're, we're, the escrow cap tonight.
Oh, if we vote to accept.
What amount of escrow is it?
I think we need to, I think we need to accept the application and then discuss it.
Decide then subsequent thing what we need to weigh the escrow.
Whatever, planning board chair or mayor's attorney, I'm sure they could recommend it now.
Don't we just schedule that? Or not, ma'am?
Yes.
I think we do recommend it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any discussion from the board?
No, there's also an application fee if we accept this. The applicant would have an application fee for the zoning, the general zoning change, which we passed earlier this year. No, I'm familiar with this, so.
So, the motion, second to approve?
Motion, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
So, we had accepted the petition, and I guess this is called A, I don't know if we need to set a, set a B for the escrow, or is that something else?
The amount of escrow, we're just trying to put our heads together to see if we can remember how much of an escrow we use for the core group.
I think it was thirty-five hundred, could be mistaken.
I think you guys might give us an estimate of what.
Do you remember Robert?
We'll be in wrong.
The amount of escrow for the, for the core group? Robert? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Schuster.
Dan.
Dan, sorry about that.
If I had a guess, I'd put something in the three to four thousand dollar range.
I think it was thirty-five hundred dollars.
I think you're right, but I think this is different, I think we got to get from.
We don't have to decide that tonight.
Right, yeah. Why don't we get estimates from John, and I don't know who else will be involved in this court of town? Do we need to think, do we need somebody else?
Well, don't forget the escrow gets replenished too, so it's just to get it started, and we could set a reasonable number, and we have an escrow clerk who will let us know when it's low and if we replenish. I think we should, but, you know. Great.
So, we'll just establish a line, escrow line, and then follow up with the amount? You don't need us to approve the dollar, I think you're right, we can move forward?
Tonight, you just have to say that you want to establish the escrow, we can, you can amend the resolution to just investigate the amount that needs to be required and set that up.
So, motion, second to approve an escrow line for the John McGuire's property.
I think you've done it.
You have?
Unless the motion by second, it's open.
All in.
Yes.
All in.
Aye.
At some.
So, John, you, you can let us know how much you think your fee would be and who else would be involved with that.
Yeah, I'll do that. I think although it is different, I think the, although the substance of the proposal is different, the kinds of things that we're looking at are similar to the core group, I'd probably use that as a guide.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Tom, can we skip over to sixteen, just to discuss the investigation?
Sixteen, I have, I have sixteen as a resolution approving the agreement with Mr. Cornelius and the endeavor Inc. for grant writing and other stuff.
I'd like to see.
She has a motion.
Motion, second.
A motion. And also ask Nancy Clark from Burgman Anthony is here on this, she, her engineering firm worked with us about a year and a half ago, working on the drainage issues in Rymer Cliff. And we have some residents here, of course, Victor.
Any comments from the board? So.
I can hear primarily from Nancy. Victor has made clear to me that he's going to need an engineer to go ahead with this to work with on the grant application.
Can we have Victor just introduce what this entails, and then I have some specific questions for Nancy, and I'm sure the public will have some comments.
Victor, I have done groundwork for the town, I guess, I've done about twelve or thirteen years in variety of different projects. The thing that's motivating us is the Superstorm Sandy Money Corporation from the end of January two thousand and thirteen. The money is being brought down. The money is being brought down to the local level through the state of New York through a variety of agencies. FEMA has sent the first shot. There is seven point four billion in the Hudson Valley Pot North Westchester. FEMA has already spent the first billion of that. And we are about to have a release for requests for letters of intent for what's called the HUD DR, meaning Disaster Relief Community Development Block Grant Funding Portion, which was announced two weeks ago as being approximately two point one billion dollars, again, for the Hudson Valley North and Westchester County, which is a heck of a lot of money. It's, there will be additional grant processes beyond that. This is the one that's at hand. This is the one that is probably the most discretionary. A few of them always get a little bit more political than other ones by being asked to deliver projects to congressional offices so that they can go on prioritized lists. There is not a cost benefit analysis requirement in this funding. There is also not the repair of FEMA-recognized impacts to the site or the project site in this particular round. This Dutchess County in actuality has only recently been added as an eligible geographic area to it because the county did not provide itself a disaster area during Sandy. However, there is concern on the congressional level that the amount of funding that there is needs to be applied to infrastructure hardening in areas that had complete demonstration of the need for that, not just during Superstorm Sandy, but during Hurricane Idly and the subsequent Hurricane Lee, what were about ten days later. So with that in mind, I proposed engaging an issue that has faced Ryan Cliff and the property owners there for many, many years, which is the design and implementation of a stormwater management system that would be designed and built in conjunction with a sanitary sewer system and avoid some of the inflowing infiltration issues that are predominant in Hudson Valley with communities that built these systems a hundred, under twenty years ago. So you've got an opportunity here. I think my senses from the regulatory bodies is that they would love to see the town take this step. They would probably require you to take this step at some point down the road. I think you're cognizant of that, largely because there is a great deal of septic discharge directly into the Hudson. And the Hudson, as we all know, is being progressively utilized more and more as a drinking water resource for communities large and small, and particularly in this vicinity.
As our drinking water is from the Hudson.
Right. So anything that we can do to enhance water quality, mitigate potential storm effects, and actually implement a system that will allow for appropriate amount of, appropriate range, additional dense concentrated growth as per the governor, the Governor Plumus' smart growth programs is being encouraged.
Well, I just want to be clear that our growth here in Reinbeck is governed by, happily, through our comprehensive zoning plans.
Yes.
So this does not, putting in this system doesn't mean that Ryan Cliff will explode. It means, in my mind, these distinct community hamlets there will have better resources for dealing with the issues at hand, the stormwater and sanitation issues.
Absolutely.
Which we're going to be forced to deal with at some point, if not now, maybe a year or several down the road.
Yes.
This is an opportunity to get a full grant to cover it.
That's true. Also, in terms of, and I work with a number of communities, Greenville and Green County, for example, which has a pretty well-defined core village district. They are facing similar circumstances with their proximity to the Catsfield Creek watershed and failing septics. And what is also happening there, they're going through their whole compliance process, they're doing all of that. At the bottom line, at the end of the day, the existing commercial structures may, which have really fine architectural fabric to them within the Hamlet core, do not, because of current wastewater management failures, largely old septic systems, have the capacity to support restaurants, food chain stores, or for small, small markets, which require a larger, larger wastewater capacity than their ancient failing septics can sustain. So I'm not particularly talking about increased development, but I'm talking about freer range of availability of retail commercial possibilities there too. I've seen that happen in many, many communities, in existing structures.
So we're talking tonight about funding you for the first phase of this, which could be a letter of intent or the application? And then we would need to get an engineer on board at some point? We would need, what type of plan to submit for this?
The LOI, which has not been.
LOI?
Letter of intent, which has not been released by HUD yet, but the announcement that it is coming has been. Will come from the paperwork, the online application process will originate at the New York State Office of Community Renewal, Housing and Community Renewal. They keep changing the acronyms, the more federal money they get. But it is to mirror, I have been told, the FEMA letter of intent process, which had a closing date of August first. The requirements of it are a fairly cursory but accurate description of problems that are posed, any backup data, particularly anything from DEC or the Department of Health.
This is the engineering requirements?
Well, this is the requirements of the LOI. Any correspondence that the town may have received or any engagement with the regulatory authorities over the issue that you have. Or that had.
Do we have any bad stuff?
Well, we have some, we have, a year and a half or over a year ago, we spoke with three engineering firms.
No, 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 I'm asking, do we have anything from DEC or federal agent or any agency indicating problems?
Yeah, I think we could have Nancy speak to that, but we do have some stuff in the Department of Health.
Oh, you do? I, I was asking.
Oh.
In actuality, a letter of support from the Dutchess County Department of Health would probably, would be awkward.
Would you be seeking this out first?
Yes. A cursory project description, a listing of the problem, listing of what the proposed solution is, a general timeline for the implementation of that solution, and a dollar figure. We do not have to present a carefully constructed, broken-out budget. I've also been instructed for purposes of the LOI, we take our best guess engineering estimate, can we mark it up thirty percent and submit it as a dollar figure?
And then if this is accepted, we move to the next phase?
We move to the, we are, we would be invited to submit a full application.
It's that next step that concerns me in terms of what's that cost? And if we don't get the grant, we don't get any reimbursement. I assume if we get the grant, there is, or is there reimbursement to?
There's a reimbursement for planning costs.
Okay, so the issue is how detailed do you need it for the second step?
They, they will include that in the application. It's generally along the lines of what I would consider and what EFC considers at the state level, a preliminary engineering report, which addresses, again, the problem in a bit more detail and as quantitatively as can be projected. Do you have specific areas of outflow? And what is the outflow into the Hudson during severe weather events? Do you have any indication of that? If you don't, when do you plan to do the testing for it? An identification of most likely problem spots. I would not suggest that you do television work for this thing or try and ascertain, dig anything up or do water quality testing or any of those impacts at that point. The budget analysis that one, I'm in the middle of the FEMA process now. The budget analysis generally is probably somewhere in the line, the range of a ten to fifteen line budget with your engineering permitting, bid process, preliminary demolition, any demolition, easement acquisition, sort of, yeah, constructions, constructions is the big number and it's usually all encompassing. And then any kind of post-construction testing and close-up that's required.
Is the letter, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Is part of the grant then could be also for additional engineering?
Yes.
Because it sounds like.
Well, they'll have to do, they'll have to do.
It's not complete engineering.
No, it's not final design. Final design is included, a post-award, and that actually, one would expect to be the largest body of work. That would be in front of you and it needs to develop a full map plan and report with all of the mapping and all of the additional support.
Back on the ledger, if we get the grant.
Yes.
Have you read, I think we got from Nancy's firm a study?
Yes, that's not, that's not.
What?
That's not been submitted yet.
Oh, you haven't seen it?
I don't know.
So you don't know whether that's sufficient or not to.
That was for stormwater. And that, that was a, that was a proposal to do a study relative to stormwater. It was not a study. It was a proposal to do a study and you just did not do the study.
We want to get Victor a copy of it so he can see.
Where you're going with it.
What, right, whether he can use that. I understand it's just for stormwater.
At that time, we were talking about drainage exclusively.
Stormwater damage.
Yeah, but when we talked about that, we talked about the, the likely discovery.
Nancy, would you?
People, sure. Hello, my name is Nancy Clark. I'm a civil engineer with Urban Anthony in Kingston. And I was here in January two thousand and twelve to interview for a project for a stormwater study. We wrote the proposal in November of two thousand and eleven. And, and when, when we were here talking with you, we discussed the idea of excavating within the roads to replace small storm facilities with larger storm facilities and the likelihood that we probably find fatal septic systems and, and we probably find tainted soil and smelling water going into the storm sewer. And at that time, it would be necessary for the homeowners to resolve issues with the existing septic systems if they had trouble. This project that Victor's talking about, if the funding is, if this project is eligible in that funding, it would be an excellent opportunity for the town to deal with wastewater and stormwater at the same time. You would have to deal with sanitary sewer collection, drainage analysis and improvements to, for that, and also wastewater treatment, because where are you going to send the sanitary sewer waste? You know, maybe you, you'll communicate with a neighboring municipality for treatment at their plant. Maybe they would, maybe the project would include plant expansion. That would have to be discussed in prep for the letter of intent, just in a, in a very high altitude general. Could we make this work so that we can figure out per gallon costs and, and come up with the, the conceptual look necessary for this letter of intent that Victor's talking about?
You're saying to send our sewage to another facility as opposed to creating our own facility?
I, I, yeah, you, you do have an option of creating your own treatment plant, but it's a pretty small neighborhood and, and when you have economy scale, wastewater treatment is, is less costly per unit if you have a better economy of scale.
How could you, how could we get, just how could we get it to another facility?
Village is right next door.
Yeah, the Village of Reinbeck, their wastewater collection system. And I haven't discussed this with the village, so, and I have no authority for.
No, no, I mean, this is a lot of the.
Okay, so, so the wastewater treatment plant for the village is on Astor, Astor Drive and, and the gardens at Reinbeck is served with sanitary sewer collection. So just having driven to Ryan Cliff, not having looked at any maps to, to start engineering this, but you'd have to collect by gravity and then you'd have to pump up over the hill. And, and my guess is that the wastewater treatment plant, I think the, the village might, might be at their, coming to the end of their comfort for, for what they've promised for capacity for projects, because I know that there are some projects that are in paper and maybe not built yet, but they've been promised capacity. So if that was a reasonable solution, I think you'd have to participate in an expansion.
Could, well, you know, we can't really ask you questions because you're not the engineer, but one of my, you know, we're responding to a grant. Yet, we're not really responding to, as another grant showed up, an opportunity, so we're creating a project concept. But you're talking about a municipal sewer facility or sharing one. With technology today, there are opportunities for individuals to have their own sewer treatment on their property, like a small bioclear, which could be discharged into this water, could be discharged into Hudson, which it happens to have in Reno.
Right, the Reinbeck Hotel has a bioclear unit.
Right.
The, the.
My concern is, first of all, we don't know whose sewer is being discharged into whatever the storm drain system. I mean, it could be five houses, it could be twenty, it could be two. So my concern is that we're engaging this huge concept of a project that might only serve a handful of people, which would ultimately create a special district that would tax this whole area.
Well, can I speak to just generalities relative to Ryan Cliff? Ryan, Ryan Cliff, there's a lot of rock, there's a lot of poor soils.
Steep slopes.
There's a steep slope, sheer, sheer, sheer drop-off down towards the Royal Urban River. Small lots, there's a very good chance that many of those lots would not support a current day standard septic system. I, I've designed, in the last year and a half, I, I did design a replacement system for a house in Reinbeck and, and we weren't able to put a standard system there. There's a pre-biofilter on, in one of the yards. You know, more expensive than, than usual and, and it took, it was a pretty heavy lift to get it through the health department. So, I, you know, if, if you did a, as you went down the road, if you wanted to do benefit cost of individual on-site, you know, non-traditional systems versus an overall system for town and district, those are exercises that could be done when you got later down in the process. I would think that for this initial letter of intent, the conservative thing would be to consider central sewer for Reinbeck. And you won't have ironed out whether you're going to have a centralized plant for Reinbeck or you're going to go to the village, but you can make some assumptions so, so that you're asking for, at least in the, on the right planet, as far as ballpark for numbers.
With the, with the grant, I mean, the grant assumes that you're going to complete a, a whole project. I mean, we don't know what was needed because we haven't dug into the roadways to find out where the.
That's, that's the thirty percent mark.
But I thought that was for you.
No, no, that was, no, Joe's precluded that at this point. Thank you. What, one of the issues, one of the, what are the interesting things that I've been experiencing in the last several weeks? In the FEMA process, they're requiring us to do engineering-backed narratives in the full application. Not lengthy, but an intelligent discussion of, number one, what happens if there's no action taken? Number two, and three, what other alternatives have been considered? Number two and three, what other alternatives have been considered and why have they been rejected? So, yeah, this is what's keeping me busy these days. One thing you could consider in terms of the cost of a pump station and additional line to the village plant, if they were willing, is actually the cost of capacity increases to the plant. You have to be funded through this process if the village would agree.
Yes, the letter of intent is, is your first stage of payment, Victor, more than the letter of intent or is that all that's entailed in the first case?
There's a lot to organize. I also, it includes the incumbent time in Albany and Washington DC that goes along with it, which I would charge you separately.
And also getting all the information together for the letter of intent.
It's, it is not a simple process. There are.
The letter of intent, I think we're talking about three thousand dollars, not four, but more than four. And three thousand for Victor's services for the proposal. I don't think the letter of intent is a big deal. I think you probably could write it now as to what, you know, but you don't have to answer that. My issue is assuming that they accept the letter of intent, you're going to need a, a proposal.
Right.
And some of the engineering could go in that proposal.
The major portion of, of the preliminary engineering will be required, be put together throughout the proposal.
So question, assuming Nancy's firm works with us in doing the actual proposal, I guess I want to get a handle on what's involved, of what's it going to cost, of knowing that we can put more engineering in afterwards, we probably should ask for the maximum amount. Believe it or they won't give it.
They'll, yeah.
And if they give it, then, you know, we have money to, to play with in terms of coming up with the best design. But it sounds like you have to get together with Nancy to get a feel and come back to us with what would be involved from Nancy's firm.
I mean, between the letter of intent, if the letter of intent is accepted and it, yes, I would, I would say it's probably not terribly different from what we, what you would put together for scoring for EFC on a CWSRF application. So if you have a ballpark price for that, I mean, if you, you give us a sort of average or a high-end, guess to admit on that, I think that's, that's a frame of reference to that.
Yeah. I.
Victor, is there a deadline for the LOI?
Currently, I'm being told it will be the end of the second week in December.
But the form's not available yet.
No, but FEMA, to give you an idea, the full, the full FEMA application that I've just gone through, I was told, we were all told it is going to be released, it's going to be put online and open for us to utilize first on October first with a, an October thirty-first deadline. They opened it on October sixteenth. They closed everything off on, on October thirty-first. Three-quarters of the municipalities I'm dealing with hadn't put together enough engineering to support the applications. They have reopened them and we have, we had a Friday night deadline for submission and we had a Sunday night deadline submission, for submission. And I'm still getting engineering and the applications are still open.
Assuming we get the LOI, when is the final proposal due? Do we know that?
It will, they will tell you it will be within a month of the letter in which, they are, they're trying to keep to the schedule of responding to the LOI within, within a month of receiving it and then giving you, let's see. So it was August for the FEMA and we got the requests to proceed to full application, I believe around September twentieth. We had a, an August thirty-first deadline to submit and because FEMA has to make its announcements before HUD completes its review of their LOIs, the announcement of the awards is going to be made before January first. The other caveat to this.
Okay, so you're analogizing this to what we did for FEMA as to a time period?
Yes.
Is that what you're trying to do?
It will have to be. Part of the issue is that, given a little of the.
Well, what does that translate in terms of time periods? One month, two months, three months?
I would anticipate that HUD will respond to the LOI submissions within four to six weeks.
Then how much time do we have, assuming we get it? How much time do we have?
Four to six weeks additionally.
Then there are four to six weeks to get an actual proposal.
They want to, the, the, the over sign on this is that this is a sixty-five billion dollar federal appropriation that was passed by this Congress at the end of January. The negotiation for bringing it to the full floor of the House, which is, you know, is a very difficult thing to get done these days, with the conservative wing of the Republican Party was that, well, the first threat came where they said, well, if you don't give us this disaster relief money now, we're not going to, the Democrats are not going to respond to disasters in your districts. And they came back and they said, the conservatives said, fine, Mr. Boehner will allow its release to the full floor of the House for a vote, but we're still paying for Katrina eight years out. You have two years from the date of the passage of the appropriation to commit the money. So it's all going through the governor's office. It is being run as a jobs program. The first six months, the governor has negotiated with the federal government in order to see how much of it he can use to beef up the state bureaucracy that has been being cut for the last six years. So the state's been in a headlong rush to spend their portion. It's now on the floor. We've already lost, what, ten months of this process? So they have to commit to these funds by March or April of two thousand and fourteen. So this is, this is what I'm dealing with.
And the, the, to commit the money after appropriation, would that, would that basically be the town has gone through map plan report, they've gone through SEACER, they're in design? I mean, that level?
Then, no, they're getting contract with the Office of Community Renewal to spend the money. And to get to contract, we will have, we will have to do SEACER renewal. We'll have to do NEPA as well, this federal one.
I'm sorry, SEACER and what else?
NEPA.
National Environmental Protection.
Which is an, an interesting process, I won't go into it. It's very different from SEACER.
I guess I just want to clarify what engineering we would need to get, if we're invited to submit an application, what kind of engineering costs would we be committing to?
Well, again, as I said, it would be similar to a preliminary engineering report that was filed with Vandenberg Code that generated zero, initial zero percent loan.
What, are we talking ten thousand, thirty thousand, four hundred thousand?
Recognize that I just got a phone call about this on Friday afternoon.
Yeah, which, thank you for coming. Yes, thank you.
But, but just ballpark, you know, I'm more comfortable with a range.
Yes.
Because there's a lot on to find here.
Yes.
But it feels like five to twelve thousand.
Okay.
Good.
That's what it feels like.
It's not, it's not four hundred thousand.
No, no, no. It, and it depends on what the requirements are for the paperwork that's not yet available for how stringent the application is and, and, and the requirements that Victor helps to make more specific.
It's a lot of juggling right now, a tad, tad, so, yeah, well, thank you.
I would, I would also say that from my experiences, Grant, right of that cost is very well within range of what I've experienced in many communities for a preliminary engineering report. One thing that will be required in that, unlike in a normal sliplining report that one does for, you know, fixing something, we will have to do not a hugely extensive but intelligently addressed analysis of the historic resources in the community and how they may be impacted by the construction.
What does that mean?
A report on, this is, you know, these are easements that we are likely to have to purchase, these are the historic structures that, that we are likely to have some disturbance with. And that is going to be, that is an issue we, that we're going to have to address at that point.
And that's, that, that is, that's probably even more, more stringently on the table because it's federal money.
That's right.
It's the fed, fed, federal money, they're very much interested in making sure that you deal with this, this are historical and archaeological.
Well, if everything is in the street, are we into easements and historic structures?
Well, you may or may not be depending upon whether or not it's all in the street. You have to determine that, of course. But historic structures also include hundred-year-olds, hundred-fifty-year-old granite curbing, any kind of horse.
Stone walls.
Things, stone walls.
Itchy posts.
All of that has to be taken into consideration in the discussion, bluestone sidewalks.
But, but be clear that, I, you know, I don't think, Victor, that the requirement is that you analyze that at the preliminary engineer stage.
Not, not preliminary, no.
Does, will the town have to have gone through NEPA by the time they make their application for the, for the grant? I hope not.
No, but they will by, by the time they sign the contract. After the grant awarded before the contract's signed.
So somewhere in the March to April timeline?
That's correct.
Okay, because there's, there's a whole lot of analysis that would go into NEPA and I would think that that gets deeper into the design process after the town has a grant and they have funding for engineering.
My understanding is that they, that, well, that they won't release funds until those reviews are completed.
Well, but are, are we at risk for that cost or is it announced that we're going to get the grant, so?
If there's an announcement, you're not going to lose the grant. You could do a bonding anticipation note on that at that point, if you needed to.
You could take a loan, what do you say? Take a loan on it, right?
If the grant could pay off at, at signing the contract.
I happen to have lunch with an attorney that's working in Pomos Office to disperse these exact funds in this exact area.
Okay.
So I've put in some questions and reach out to him and I'll let you know if I can get any good information.
Get me a, get me a, a lunch and meeting. It's Andrew Kennedy, is it?
No.
And to this ballpark that you gave us of five to seven and, you know, I'm not going to.
Five to twelve?
Five to twelve, I'm sorry. And that was unintentional, that was, that was unintentional. Five to twelve, I was going to say, I won't hold you to that ballpark because I think you got to think about it.
My name is Urban Anthony.
Would that ballpark include both the stormwater and sanitary?
Yes, the preliminary engineers' report should discuss the, the project in concept in total and so it should discuss stormwater improvements, wastewater collection and wastewater treatment, at, at least in some preliminary fashion.
And can I add, add to that from my point of view, is that if you were engaging both issues at the same time, particularly in the light of the storm events of the last two and a half years, the regulatory authorities are going to prioritize this project. Because if, if what you're doing is designing a system that operates concurrently and is constructed with the cost efficiencies at the same time, it's a real benefit.
Victor, two other questions. What are really our chances of getting this, you know, millions sounds great, but we are, there'll rhyme back here.
Let me tell you, I have fourteen municipalities now that I'm working on this thing with. I got calls in Maine from Gibson's and Maloney's offices, because I work in both districts, saying bring in every project you've got. The first deadline for FEMA request was July third. The governor's office on July second extended it and extended it to include the Mohawk Valley, saying that the storms in the Mohawk Valley this spring meant that they should also be spending money out there. The real scuffle was they weren't getting any projects. They were getting enough projects in the stop up to a million dollars that FEMA was trying to expend, the billion. Then, two weeks later, because they were having issues over the large bulk, the twenty-seven billion they've been spending in New York on, on all of this, they moved Westchester County out of the Hudson Valley pool of funding, leaving us with the seven point four billion without Westchester, without West, competing with anything in Westchester. They moved it into the city's pool because they're having trouble spending that money down there. Then they added projects that involve Lee and Irene as well as, as well as Sandy. Then they added projects from Lee and Irene which were not adequately, adequately funded from FEMA's public assistance funding back then. So communities are now going back to that period of time and issuing up invoicing that they paid for or wanted for that were rejected by FEMA in two thousand and eleven and that's being funded. The latest twist in, in the HUD piece is that it is heavily discretionary. There will be a prioritized list coming out of the congressional offices from the governor and two congressmen who work and live in one of the two last swing districts in this country are very, very anxious to get this money on the ground as quickly as they can and preferably before the election in two thousand and fourteen. That's the picture on the political side.
I was expecting percentage, we have a seventy-five percent chance of getting.
My belief is that they're going to be turning the money back because the, the levels of detail and bureaucracy about seeing these, these grants through one step after another. First of all, I mean, I was dealing with Cratsfield, I was dealing with a number of communities where you don't have a clerk or a supervisor or a board member that is particularly computer literate and all of this stuff is online. So many of the communities and the cat skills who really, really, really need this money don't have access to it simply because of their own minor capacity on the ground.
You're working for a lot of other municipalities who are going to compete with us.
Compete, uh, compete with you? I think that you will be the only municipality I'll be working for who doesn't have, who doesn't have a functional system at all. So I don't think we're competing here.
That leads me into the last question. Are we, to do the application, the LOI, are we opening the, are opening, are we exposing ourselves of the?
To the E C orders on consent or some kind of regulatory action or, you know, what's the ramification of? Well, you know, you're probably very good at positioning these things in a way where it doesn't, it doesn't create a major response on the regulatory agency side. It, it is a lot about language.
We're already on record with the county board of health.
Well, that's.
It does, it's what?
Yeah, you are.
I mean, we're on the radar already, which is why we're looking at this because we believe eventually we'll have to do something about it.
You know, the other interesting thing from my point of view, and, and another reason why this, this smells really good to me is, you know, I don't have many communities that have proximity to Hudson River that you do. There is no community that I know of that has these issues so close to the river.
So I got two more questions. Well, first one's a statement. What we learned from the landfill stuff was DEC is not going to throw us under the proverbial bus because they're going to be on hook for funding and if they don't have the funding to help us, they're not going to turn us in.
Right.
So we, we learned that already. The second thing is how many months into this process are we before we know what the ongoing costs are going to be? But what, like what we learned with Vandenberg Code, seven seventy-eight is that the annual cost of the sewer should cost somebody. How, how far, how far into this do we, until we find that out?
Well, you mean what, what an average sewer rate should be for the Hamlet of Rhine Cliff?
Yeah.
We could tell you that tomorrow. There's a, the state has EFC bases its zero percent loan structure on what.
I'm not talking about loans, I'm talking about.
No, 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 let me, let me finish my sentence. The, the state bases its application of federal's. The, the state bases its application of federal's, federal loan subsidies on a targeted dollar amount per community. And, and it's based on the median household income of the community. And we could do, either it's listed in the census or we could do an income survey, but I can tell you what the average rate in New York State is for a rural community with X amount of septic.
Okay, but the way I understood this is we're not borrowing anything.
No.
We're going to get a grant.
Right.
And what I want to know is how, if we have to put in a plan, let's say we have to put in a plan just for-
What's your O N M going to be?
How much is it going to cost a year on average to operate that plant?
That's an engineering question.
And I want to know how many months into the process before we know the answer to that?
That's pretty good. I'm sorry. What's your, what is the O N M going to be on the proposed plan of action?
That should come out of final design, I would think. So how far is that in?
That, that's not going to be, that's not going to be prepared for the, for the grant application, which is a preliminary engineer's report. That is going to need to be prepared as part of the map plan report. We're talking about a municipal district. So a municipal district would have to be defined, defined with a map plan and report which talks about capital costs and, and if necessary, finance costs, but maybe that's not necessary here, and operation costs. That, that's the time at which you would get that.
Okay, but so how long from now is that?
March.
I don't think it's March.
Sounds like March.
Yeah, because if, if they're getting the funds in, in March or April, then I would think that you're going to want to do a public participation process. You need to figure out how large your service area is going to be. You're, you're going to want to do it in a sensitive way where, where the town board is not jumping this project, but having participation of the residents for maybe carving out what the service area would be to, to make as many people happy and, and displease as few people as possible. So I, I would think that you're, you're a few months down the road after that.
So, okay, I'm sorry.
I, I think summer.
I'm not in the contract yet.
Summer.
I'm not in the contract yet when I get that.
No.
Okay.
You mean to give money?
Mm-hmm.
The issue is that if you move into the final map plan and report, you'll be paying for that phase. That is an expense that you can either borrow for or can be reimbursed of the grant for. But if you find at the end of that map plan and report, you've got an O N M cost and a rate structure that is going to be unacceptable to the majority of the residents in the district, and you decide to go, not to sign the contract on the big grant awarding, then you're left stuck with the cost of heading up through the map plan and report.
Okay.
That's what you're getting with.
But Victor, in terms of the cost of the homeowner, assuming that we get the grant and we build this thing, all we're talking about is the operational cost. There shouldn't be a capital cost, there shouldn't be a further design cost.
No.
Let's hear what people-
Let's go.
Hey, Matt.
I had some comments about the river district. I, I've heard since I moved-
Introduce yourself.
Oh, my name is Ben Westwood, resident of Rhine Cliff. And since I moved there more than a decade ago, there's always this anecdotal evidence, oh, the sewer, the sewer is bad, the sewer is bad, but they've been shot us down. I've heard everything in the world. In my house, they did something in the eighties which solved this problem. They did block grants, they found houses that had leaking sewer, septic. And they helped pay homeowners to fix them and replace them. My house has a dosing septic system which was put in under that block grant before I purchased that house. Perfectly engineered, it worked fine. It didn't cost eight, ten million dollars. Probably if you figure the Hamlet of Rhine Cliff is approximately according to the census, a hundred and fifty houses, three hundred and fifty people. If ten percent, and I'm just making up the number which sounds kind of odd, if ten percent of a hundred and fifty houses are leaking directly into the Hudson, that's fifteen houses. Those could be identified like they did in the eighties. You can do dye tests, they have even more sophisticated tests. You could look for a federal grant to help those people get new septic systems. As far as what we know about polluting the Hudson from Rhine Cliff, we know that the biggest watchdog agency or actually organization is the River Keepers. They monitor seventy-five locations along the Hudson. They don't monitor anything next to Rhine Cliff. They don't find any problem coming out of Rhine Cliff, they never have. You can look at the reports they come out with every month. From North Point to Tibbely Bayes, those are the two points, north and south of Rhine Cliff on our side. They're both like the lowest levels of, of anything registered, and they don't even monitor near us because they don't even consider it a problem. The D E C, when I saw the conversation about the D E C, do we have letters to do it? No one actually said, yes, we have letters. Oh, yes, we've been, they've been complaining for years. Because you don't have letters from the D E C complaining for years that you have such problems. Now what I did hear is a lot of conversation about how we can spend other people's money. I'm not a tea partyer, but I don't necessarily believe in whining rants which were really designed to help people from a terrible storm. I was in Rhine Cliff during Sandy. I didn't even have the lights go out. Wasn't a terrible storm. Are there stormwater problems that we can write a grant for? I think that's totally reasonable. The stormwater issues, there's no ongoing maintenance except for the highway requirement. You build a sewage plant, I heard already that it was going to, it's definitely going to be a pumping station. There's no question whether we pump it and take it somewhere, or we pump it all the way to the village, or pump it to what might be case would be to get land we don't already own. The town doesn't own any land, put a sewage treatment plant above Rhine Cliff, they would have to get it. And then they'd have to put a sewage treatment plant, and then you're talking about all this potential historic preservation issues that you're going to have to deal with because every bit of land there is historically important. I just, I feel like someone just put a pot of money in front of us and was like, oh, we got to get it because it's there. But you're finding a solution to a problem, we have a very, I, I haven't seen the problem actually quantified. There's nothing, there isn't years of data coming back and saying, oh yeah, we really have to fix this. Suddenly we have this opportunity. I see an opportunity to get a lot of money, and, and there's just anecdotal evidence. Yes, you can find people in Rhine Cliff who will say, oh yes, it smells bad. It smelled bad in that, in that stormwater. I don't know what smelled bad. Is it organic matter rotting from a deer that died up the road? Or is it someone's septic system that's rotting or going through the stormwater? We have never investigated, no one's ever complained in terms of the D E C. And we're talking about something which we know just from the Catskill Creek problem is going to be eight to ten million dollars to build that plant. And the residents of Rhine Cliff after this thing is built are going to have to pay. There was no answer here about how much they're going to have to pay because you don't know. They're going to have to pay for decades to come. I have a perfectly good working septic system. Why would I want to pay for a sewer district that I don't need to join? The hotel, which is the largest commercial institution in Rhine Cliff, has its own sewage treatment plant. Why would they want to join a sewage treatment plant when they already have a half million dollar sewage treatment plant? So what is this being built for? And, I mean, I understand there are certain residents that would benefit. There are certain homeowners that would benefit from having the, a sewer district. But I don't know, you build it for, you know, one or two people or five people. Block grants, we did it before, we can do that again if that's a real problem. If you're doing the drainage, if you're doing the issue about stormwater and you discover, oh, this person is tied right into our storm drain, well, they're going to have to be dealt with. There's a block grant which they can get money from, and then they can get a new septic system. And even if it is a little more expensive, as Nancy pointed out, some of the newer systems do, are, she was able to get one to work in a small space, that's still possible. I just, no one has pointed out that there's any historic record of there being any actual sewage problem except for, oh, there is one. Just saying it doesn't make it so. So those are my comments.
I just want to clarify, so you're proposing that perhaps we look at a stormwater drainage system only and deal with individual problems as a separate issue?
Exactly, yes. And, and potentially if there is a grant that you can get to put a block grant in that people could give into when they have a, a septic problem? That's what was done in the eighties, it's already been done once.
Ninety-four, I think.
Or ninety-four, that was the late eighties, but okay, ninety-four. So that solution seemed to have worked and solved a lot of people's problems. So that seemed like-
Thank you, that's, that's-
Thank you, Matt. One thing though, and I think that's a very well reasoned statement, if I, if I may say so, but the houses in Rhine Cliff are so old, you have to presume that those that haven't failed yet will ultimately fail someday. And this might be a good time to, to address future failures as well. But I, I see your point.
Before we take the next comment, a quick question for Victor. Would, could we do something like that, stormwater only, and then ask for grant money to deal with individual issues?
You can ask for stormwater. Actually, it's interesting that it was a, a block grant program. It would have gone through the county compact in earlier administration. Unless there's a low-income situation, block grants are not applicable to individuals and private property owners. Yes, you should examine the possibility of doing a stormwater system and doing something that manages whatever wastewater issues you think are going to arise. You need more, you need more research on what the problems really are there in the wastewater.
Okay, but this grant opportunity could maybe give us that flexibility to do stormwater-
Absolutely, we have-
And deal with, instead of creating a sewer district, maybe just deal with the individual problems as we uncover them?
Yes.
Within the context of this-
Well, it's not, it's, we have to quantify what it is we're going to do at the get-go.
Fair enough.
Do you want to talk about, about managing those issues, beginning and, and limiting the scope of the wastewater side of the equation? Absolutely, that should be, that's an option that should be on the table.
Fantastic.
But that should be a recommendation from your engineering firm.
Thank you.
And, and we did that with the Cove also, we were talking about-
Right.
We're going to reduce the scope of the project, the collection portion of it. So if it's the same sort of a thing, sure. My question is, the grant, I mean, will it cover the, the investigation of finding out what, what the problem is? I mean, we don't know what the problem is.
It will cover, yes, it'll cover all of your engineering expenditure. My recommendation, frankly, but, you know, I'm the grant writer. I would tell you to put in for the most expensive approach. And then if, if you've come up with an alternative that resolves the issue in a way that meets the requirements of a hundred-year storm. The issue with failing septic is that you're banking on the continuing maintenance of private homeowners and replacement of the systems every twenty years or so. You're banking on that. The issue with severe storm events, which is the core of this federal appropriation, is what happens in a hundred-year storm event when stormwater that exceeds its normal path of flow, even, even with a state-of-the-art stormwater management system floods properties that have failing septic systems? And what is the impact on the water quality of the coast on the Hudson, into the Hudson in that case? And the other question that I'm running into, a great deal I'm running into, Wapinjus in the town of Poughkeepsie, is, you know, how much, how many, how many homes in Rhine Cliff are well-based? And what are the impacts of stormwater washing septic from failing septic systems into any kind of a watershed situation that's going to have an impact on the aquifers? We're finding this again and again and again. Town of Wapinjus, Village of Wapinjus Falls, I've got, I'm working with Woodhill Green as a separate client, which is a, a low-income residential complex.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Sorry to take off this, man.
Yeah.
Andrew Shepherd, I live in Rhine Cliff. I actually live up on Kelly Street before you get to Russell. And a couple of things, there are people on the water, my neighbors on the water. They, a couple of years ago, I actually redid the well because they are bound by rock, and it would cost them like twenty thousand dollars to get to the water. So the, the, we are on a giant rock with a little bit of dirt on top. And you're asking this community to endure a lot of tearing up of our very tight-defined roads that are already, you hear people complaining about traffic and sightlines and that all the time. Putting us through all of that. And in the end, when it's all done, we're, you know, everything's paid for, whatever, where are the ones holding the bag for the pumps, the, the generators that have to be redundant and tested all the time? And when all's said and done, there, nobody's actually connected when you put in a plant like this. Each homeowner would have to bear the cost of connecting. My neighbors just down the way just had a board of health approved prepared of their septic system. Are they going to jump on board? Are any of those people in the five acres home going to jump on board to be in your district? No, you guys have an affordable housing subsidy in this town. We have people on fixed incomes, and you're going to throw them into a new tax district? The other thing is, this isn't, this isn't, we're not living in a-
I think that's preliminary, though, to say that. None of us have said that.
But that, that would be the end result with the, with the septic system, the sewer system for wastewater. That would be a, a district that could put people in-
We've also just identified that we could perhaps do a stormwater drainage system and deal with each individual thing separately.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure, I just want to, you know, emphasize some, some points that, that we have to be extremely careful with this. And, you know, the hotel didn't ask me to pay for their septic, their system. But we don't live in a stagnant technological age either. Wastewater is a huge problem around the globe. People are making a lot of money coming up with better ways to treat it. The, the thing about us being on the Hudson River as opposed to on a creek, the, being closer to the river is actually to our advantage. We have, if you've been down by Rhine Cliff, there's a channel, and the water goes by four times a day. Billions of gallons of water go by, there's little Rhine Cliff sitting there. The problem with pollution is dissolution. It, it, it's so much water that it's not really that big a problem. It's very, that, that's why it hasn't been identified, that's why people don't test it.
Victor, if we do nothing, and the D E C says, hey, you're polluting the Hudson, do something about it, that's going to cost millions of dollars to do something about it.
Why would it cost millions of dollars?
Well, we have to put in some kind of source system.
Why is that? I, I saw this old house, I reworked this old house a couple of weeks ago. They put a plant in the basement and they drank the water out of the end of it.
So you're assuming each-
I'm assuming it's, it's individual solutions are much better off. If you had to fix twenty properties, completely fix them, it costs ten thousand dollars to do it, that's two hundred thousand dollars, that's not millions of dollars. And as I said, this isn't stagnant, these things are changing constantly. There's development, it changes in this technology. So put, I guarantee you, you could do with Vandenberg Cove, what did those filters cost you? Just the filters. One thing goes wrong, and you could say, oh, it's only going to cost this much. The task, the community's going to have to bear the cost of any problems. The town's not going to run into a rescue. It, it's just, why would you ask all these homeowners, with a hundred and fifty homeowners, to bear the responsibility of something that isn't necessarily their problem?
Well, I think we've already determined that we're looking at various options.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion to second look through.
Well, I think we have a-
Thank you. I didn't see your hand up, Richard.
What's that?
I didn't see your hand up, but-
Oh, no, I didn't have it, I was waiting for Andrew to finish. Richard Cooper Schantzy, I live in Rhine Cliff and have some other properties down there. And I don't know where to begin with it, I mean, I, I'm, Andrew, I think we have to be very careful with it. And as far as I understand it, I mean, we're not even going for a feasibility study here. We're going for like the real deal. I mean, we're not, it's not a feasibility, a feasibility study. What Victor is proposing is getting Fed money to actually do wastewater and sewer treatment for Rhine Cliff, right? Not a feasibility study.
Well, I think we're taking in agreement with Victor to, to, to apply for it, and then we're talking about different options to follow through with at least portions of it.
And part of that preliminary engineering.
We're not trying to get-
Preliminary engineering could be a feasibility study.
Well, I think that's a good step. Well, that's, that's what I think we're all kind of, you know, we have to be careful and whatever. But, you know, I, I disagree with these guys about, you know, there's no proof that there's been problems with-
been problems with, with Rhine Cliff emptying raw sewage and systems actually failing all the time and just going into the Hudson River. You know, in 19, it was 1994 Elizabeth, that the, there were 14 houses that were cited that were going to be condemned in Rhine Cliff unless they came up with systems. And the grants were somewhere between $4,000 and $6,000 each. They did not take commercial areas, so the, the China Rose Building and the hotel did not get a grant because they were commercial. Patty's Bar got a grant because they claimed it was like a private club for the firehouse. So they got, they got away with it. But, so, and that was 20 years ago. Now, you know, I, I think a lot of properties were not properly identified and they got through it without having to put a system in. I think the, the 20-year systems that were put in, some of them are failing. I think if we all had an acre or two down there, I would say this is really a stupid idea. But because we have postage-stamped properties, most of them in right down in there, not necessarily where Andrew is, but right down in the middle there, it's pretty tough. And, you know, I'm a, I'm a product of the 60s and, you know, we always, you know, we tried to turn it around, you know, we started to say, no littering, you know, let's, let's make things better, let's like try to keep this earth going. You know, it would probably, you know, hurt me as far as monetarily more than most people paying whatever that might be, that yearly, if there is a tax, we don't even know that is for sure. But, but, you know, and really in the long run, and really thinking about the big picture, it is really the right thing to do. Because, I mean, Andrew, you said, you know, we have this current that goes through there and, and so just, you know, this little bit of sewage going into it, you know, I mean, it's cleaning it up. I mean, I, I don't think that's the right way to look at that. Because all of the communities that were built along the Hudson River, they were built here because they can empty into the Hudson River, and that's where we got to in the 60s. And it wasn't just the big companies that were polluting it, it was all these little It's not necessarily the DEC that's going to shut us down, it's again, the Duchess County Board of Health. Because they continually ask questions about what's going down there, what's happening down there, and I get hit with some things from time to time. So it is a problem. And it's easy to like stick your head in the sand and say, you know, we can all get these, you know, high-end, very modern ways and techniques and things to service our own, but there are some buildings that just cannot do it. It's, that's, that's the way that is. So I'd like to, I'd like to go to the next step, wherever that is. I think we have to be very careful. I don't know, you know, I'm sure there's no room for a sewage plant, but I don't, maybe, I'm not sure, maybe there is. I was, that was interesting about carting whatever sewage we do somewhere, I mean, I don't know, I never thought about that. But I do think we have to do something because it's failing and it's failing and it's, it's, you know, you know, you mentioned the hotel. The hotel would consider, even though they put in a half a million dollar system, they can't even keep functions going down there in the middle of August because it still smells right in front of the building. You know that, I know that. It's terrible down there. I don't know, maybe they should fail, maybe that's what you want. But I think we should go to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add one thing. If anyone would like to pursue, investigate what's going into the storm drains and central cams up there with TPS and identify what the problems are, you should be the property owner that's responsible. You shouldn't ask the whole community to do, to fix it. The other thing is that while current zoning is, I spent six years going to copilot meetings around this, keeps the development away from the hamlet. Put in a sewer plant, zoning will change. You know, we do this copilot every 10 years, zoning changes. You put in that, a sewer plant, it's a magnet for development. Someone's going to walk in and say, look at these overburdened customers, they're paying a hot, too high rate. Let me add some housing and we'll, we'll reduce the cost for the neighborhood. This happens over and over again.
Well, I think, I think we're, we have a motion second to approve engagement with Victor.
Yeah, no motion?
We do it. So...
Can I just, I have a question, Victor. Can we approve tonight? It seems to be among the three people here, a decision, and Nancy's still thinking about her ballpark, which I mischaracterized as it mentions. If we defer the contracts ahead with this for two weeks, that still give you a, it seems to me the LOI is not a big deal to do. We meet again on the 25th, then maybe...
We have to, we do have to have a special meeting to adopt the budget, that's a book before that, pretty before that.
How much lead time do you really need if we decide to...
I would defer to Nancy about that because I can write about the issues as they exist in an unquantifiable way at this point, largely because a lot of research hasn't been done and needs to be done.
But do you need that for the LOI?
I need, I need a dollar number and I need a cursory analysis of what is conceivably the existing set of problems. And I need a dollar figure around the more expensive solutions. If, in the context of putting together your final design and the map plan and record, and you explore all of the possibilities that have been discussed here tonight, which I think you should do, and we come up with an alternative that has a guaranteed 75 to 100-year life to it, that the municipality is responsible for. Again, my point about this is, this is great, I mean, I have a septic system. I have arguments with my neighbors over how often they should be inspected, cleaned, and maintained because everybody has got a different budget and a different idea about those things. And I sit on top of my own aquifer and my own drinking water. So, you know, I know that those are, that those are, that I am beholden to my neighbor's capacity to maintain their septic units, probably for my drinking water or at least, you know, for, for the current system I have in the house, which pays...
Excuse me just one second. Would it be possible maybe to, to increase the amount that you, that you need to find out some of these questions in the beginning?
In the front, final.
Yeah.
You mean before the letter of intent?
No, after the letter of intent.
And before the full application.
Oh, okay, before the full application, do some investigation?
Yeah, like what if we did put the camera down every house in the hamlet? And, and really, I mean, how much could that cost? Couple hundred thousand, maybe $60,000?
I don't think you're going to put a camera down, but you might do some night testing.
We could do it for every house in the hamlet and see...
Why don't we want to do it where we may not get the grant? You could put that in as part of the grant. You can always turn down the grant if you know you're going to get it.
I'm just trying to think of the best way of putting it in.
The other thing you can do, the other thing, and I've just done this five or six times, between the time that the LOI was asked by FEMA to go to full application and the point at which the full application was due, discovery has happened, the projects have changed, the budgets have changed, the, the problem still exists. That's what they're most interested in doing, is finding a resolution for the problem. So, you know, if we, if we proceed with, you know, I'm, I'm dealing with the town of Cornwall, it doesn't have an engineering thing, and they're saying $52 million for a new plant off the flood plan. That's the dollar figure I put in for the LOI. Now I've got some specifics in, in the six weeks between that period of time, that dollar figure has dropped substantially because placing the new plant where they want is going to decrease their IMI issue, which is also going to be less of a cost. So, the, for purposes of the LOI, project definition, a discussion of the most probably basic, straightforward, and labor-intensive way of dealing with it. And then subsequent to that, if we go into full request, go to the full thing. And we've got a couple of different options on the table, some of which may be cheaper and are more appropriate. That's the way to go.
Okay.
I would also tell you that even after that point, you can amend.
Great, good, thank you.
All right, I thought we had an open question to Nancy, I was doing, how much time do you need if we defer this tonight for two weeks? So you can have another time.
I still think you're going to want to engage in a, in a grant exploration.
In the letter of intent.
You still want to, you still want to look for the grant.
I think we have an open motion to vote to approve this tonight. I think we should vote on that.
Okay, but I, I guess I have a question as part of the discussion. Nancy is, Victor said he needs some preliminary engineering. We did not vote tonight on this. How much time do you think you need to give Victor that which he needs?
But she's not under contract. Why would she do that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't have a application, we don't have a deadline, but from what Victor's talking about, it sounds like it's a, a day or a day and a half of work. You know, the next time I have a day or a day and a half with no work allocated to it is a key question. But, but I'm a consultant, so, so I'm used to doing things on my own time, these are me tonight, I don't work for you, but I'm here. So, you know, we can work it out. I, I, I'm a little concerned about when you're going to make a decision.
We're going to vote right now.
Okay, and, and I'm not being retained tonight.
And thank you for coming. Very kind. Okay.
All right, so would that, I would write the vote, motion second, former favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. What are we voting on? What, the, the contract with Victor?
Yes.
This would allow us to pursue the grant.
Okay, and at some point, would you...
We have four ayes, I believe, of May, the May?
I would do May, I would wait till weeks to hear more from the public.
So just for, well, that was, he's moved, federal.
And at some point, perhaps you'd hire me to do...
Yeah. With moving ahead, with sensitivity and hearing what was said tonight, I just want to say thank you, and that's what, personally, I'll be looking for it. Not looking to lay a huge burden on a community.
We do have a responsibility to find out the problem.
Yes, yes, yes.
No doubt about that.
Well, you know, I'm trying to...
That likely is our, is our question as we look forward.
Being sensitive to the people that we're going to serve, not looking to create a huge burden. I guess we'll be in touch about, you know, having you do your day and a half of work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Welcome, just to the press and Joe's.
No, we don't, we're...
No, we're the other one. And then you call Joe and address him.
Don't you, don't we ask, why don't you have to do a public hearing if you want?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, sweetie.
I'll, I'll call you, yeah, yeah.
She'll never make her call again.
At this point, she will. Thank you.
Is that the item 13, is the resolution approving 2014 contract, the local farmer's market?
Motion?
If there's nothing here about the local farmer, I'm going to trouble see what we have.
There's nothing specific, but the farmer's market points out that they have five vendors in their, regular farmer's market, so that they do serve local farmers. Looking for the list, the...
What? Yeah, okay. So, vote the figure aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Thanks, what's up to you? I didn't propose. I certainly support the farmer's market, it helps out the local economy here in the village, so for that reason, I do want to support the local farmer and hopefully see a Rhine Beck farmer up here, so for that reason, I do vote aye.
Aye, aye.
Item 14 is a resolution approving the rights proceeding, CPH.
CPH, second.
This, this is the one, Gina, that we've heard nine to 10%, but we won't put the higher...
Right, right.
One percent through there.
Oh, wow. Very cool.
All right, item...
Aye.
Vote. So move. Item 15 is a resolution containing the Heinz, Stroud, and Castle.
Motion?
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Joe, thank you for this, continuing work on this.
I didn't hear what, when we're voting on?
We voted Stroud, and Stroud.
Oh, yes. The Heinz. Item 17 is a resolution accepting the revised proposal for royal carting of expanded hours for an additional fee at the transfer station. That would open up some time on Thursdays from, I believe, one to four.
One to four, they had to bump it up earlier because it gets dark so early and their insurance carrier was concerned. That's what they said, Bruce. So I said, that's fine, and then when it gets lighter in the spring, we can revisit having that open later. Did you reach out to any of the people who had reached out to us? Yes, and that was fine, but for people who do work, they'll still be able to go on Saturday. And the fee is only $1 per person if they're coming just to dump recycling.
So we're right back to where their original offer was.
We might, no, except we have a weekday.
We had, we had the weekday with the original offer.
Not year round, not year round. They closed it, no, they closed it in September.
No, they came back after they were here with an offer and you said, no, we want it later, let's go back and, and we, so what we agreed on was what they offered.
Right, but we didn't know at that time that they would have an insurance policy, so initially we said it would be more convenient if they could do it later.
And they did assure me that when it stays lighter later, that they will revisit it and we can extend it later.
But Gina, my question is, we're back to Thursday from Wednesday?
No.
Is that what their letter says or is this a mistake?
That's what his letter said, but I thought they switched it to Wednesday.
I thought so too, but when is this Thursday?
The email you forwarded to me said Thursday.
Said Thursday, but they're signing up and the thing was Wednesday.
Can you, I think we're approving it for Tom to sign it, whether it's Wednesday or Thursday.
But I will confirm the actual date.
But you can confirm whether it's Wednesday or Thursday?
I know that, that his email did say Thursday, John, and that took me by surprise as well because I thought they had switched it to Wednesday, but I'll confirm with him, visit tomorrow.
So we're agreeable with either?
Yes.
And we're authorizing Tom to sign that that's what we're voting on?
We have an open vote, yeah. A motion?
All ready to hear it? Aye.
Aye. John says we don't have a, we didn't open it.
A motion.
Motion in a second. Motion? I'll motion. A second? Okay.
All right. Item 18 is a resolution introducing a local law, and I believe this is for a notice of public hearing for, to establish the office of a single-appointed successor pursuant to Real Estate Property Tax Law 328 now. Now, this is a notice of public hearing, and this is what we're advised by a council. So we would have to set a date, which by FOSA, we also have to set a date to approve, what did you just do?
Well, the 25th is what the resolution says.
Okay.
Will be here.
That would be our next, our next town working.
Town working. So the motion is to approve the number 28 to set a public hearing.
Fifth. Twenty fifth.
For local law number blank 2013. Motion second? Motion second?
A motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote.
And that is gonna be on the 25th, right?
That'll be on 25th.
My phone is dead, is that a regular town working?
Yes.
25th, that's Monday before Thanksgiving? Okay. I don't want to get a phone. I'll be in the office.
It will go where?
I don't think it will land.
Also, we have to say a date to approve the, a special need to approve the budget and that has to be by the 25th. So do you guys, do you look at your-
Look at mine, but I'll work with what I-
20th is the Wednesday, 18th is the Monday, so the 20th is Wednesday. So you guys have to, any time between now and 20th.
Can I bring one point? I'm fine with either of those days, but we got an email today from our bookkeeper saying that we had an additional $6,500 in change before we met our cash account. At which point are we going to put that into a, a capital plan or in our capital projects? When do we do that?
I think at our next meeting, we can-
amend the budget.
Change the change to a new budget before we adopt it.
Do you want to set it from the 18th? Can we do Wednesday, 20th? That's our last day, I think.
Okay, Monday, the 18th, what time?
You can set it earlier.
Whenever you like. I'm not available from about 11 till 12.
I'm just a little nervous because I can't see my calendar, but I'll check it as soon as I get there.
18th, what time?
Four or five o'clock.
Four o'clock?
Four or five.
Four.
So motion second to approve the 18th of November for 4pm to adopt the budget.
A motion second.
All in.
Aye.
So that would conclude everything that I have.
One more little thing. It'll be quick. I heard from a constituent several years ago, he had raised the point of the Stone Church Cemetery and whether or not we were going to do maintenance and I was asked to follow up on that and I don't remember where we are with it.
We're going to continue to do maintenance and I've reached out to Tom LeGrand to find the actual deed. If we're taking care of the maintenance, we should have a deed and he's going to be reserving. Restitution as well, so.
And Suzanne is applying for a grant.
So we're still looking at, and you'll report, uh-
Exactly.
Okay, so what? Giving them one at 9:18, I'm just like down there.
I'm sorry, yeah, uh, way, way and, yeah.
All right.
We're working on that with the city area meeting.
So that is still in the works, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, so what's the second?
Let people know that. Second.
All in.
Aye. Thank you everyone.